Good evening. Good evening. I'm Lynda Miller, Chair of the Conquered Planning Board, and I call to order this meeting on Tuesday, December 12, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. The Planning Board is convening this meeting by video conference using the Zoom application. This meeting will be recorded for future on-demand viewing. I'd like to welcome everyone attending this meeting and take attendance of members and staff. Rob Almeida. Rob, if you could unmute yourself.
Sorry, apologize.
Thanks, you're here. Andrew Boardman.
Here.
Abby Flanagan will join us later. She has a delay this evening. Sue Felshen.
Here.
Mark Giddings.
Here.
And myself, Lynda Miller, here. Also, Elizabeth Hughes, our Town Planner, is here as well tonight to help guide us through this meeting. I will briefly review our meeting procedures. Each vote will be conducted by roll call. There will be public participation during certain portions of the meeting. Those participating remotely wishing to make a statement or ask a question during a public participation period should use the Zoom raised hand function or *9 on a phone and wait to be recognized. Once recognized, you may unmute yourself in Zoom or use *6 from a phone and then speak. When you speak, please address the chair, identify yourself by name, address, and any relevant affiliations, and speak clearly for the meeting record. Comments during public participation are limited to three minutes or less, except for extenuating circumstances such as for those with disabilities, and are requested to be respectful. Answers to questions unless very brief and fact-based will be deferred for follow-up at future meetings. The Board welcomes written comments at any time instead of or in addition to those made during public participation. We will now go to the first item on the agenda. That is a public hearing for the application of Crosspoint Associates, Inc. under zoning bylaw section 11.8 for site plan review to demolish the existing restaurant building and construct a new one-story multi-tenant building with site improvements at 768 Elm Street, parcel 1898. Could the applicant please identify themselves? And I believe you will be providing us with an update this evening.
Good evening. Carrie McCormick, Director of Development with Crosspoint Associates. With me tonight is Brandon Lee from Kelly Engineering, who is our civil engineer, as well as Ken Cram from Bayside Engineering, who's been our traffic engineer. So they were with us at the last meeting, so you're familiar with probably both. So I'm happy to come back before you. The last time we met was the 14th of November, so I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. So we have done a few things since our last meeting before you. We went before the Natural Resource Commission on the 6th of December. We have just a few cleanup coordination items with them. One relates to the note about temporary snow storage, which was a comment made by GPI, the peer reviewer for the planning board, that it would be recommended that it would be limited to 24-hour period after a snow event. It's just right before one of the stormwater bioswales, so they just wanted to see that that's removed so it doesn't prohibit any of the stormwater coming off the site into the bioswale. So we're commenting about that. And also, the invasive species, we'll be managing some of those. There's a variety of different invasives at the perimeter of the site, so they just want to know exactly where they were and specific treatment methods. So our wetland scientists went out to the site, identified those locations, and will be incorporating those onto the landscape plan. And we provided them with a treatment method that we'll be doing to maintain that, to knock those down. And the last one was just a minor note about the material for the grow medium for the grass seed and meadow mix, that they didn't want jute netting, which I guess is hazardous to small reptiles and things like that. So we will be proposing to use Flex Terra. So those three items will be updated in a comment letter along with the plan and submitted to the Natural Resource Commission by the 15th. And we will be on their next agenda, or meeting on the next meeting agenda for the 27th of December. That goes forward. So that should, that sounds like that would be our last meeting before the conservation, before Natural Resource Commission. And if I could share a plan, can I share a screen?
Definitely.
And... I'm working with one screen right now, so maybe challenging to share. So you should see the landscape plan. So the last time that we met, what we had to be, to update everyone with was the change in use from what we had previously proposed or thought we were a lead tenant was going to be an urgent care for this middle or third space, 5,000 square feet. And what we gave you the news, exciting news, is that it's actually looking like it's going to be a restaurant. So we've shown the proposed patio for the rear, which we've incorporated on now the civil plans as well as incorporated in the full landscape plan. So it'll be a small proposed patio for the rear. And we also talked about the change in use and what that did to the parking total. So we tried to go through those numbers, and I think it got really confusing. So what we did was just take it offline, and I worked with Elizabeth to kind of go over our numbers, our seat counts and what that did to the parking totals. So what we're required to provide is 141 parking spaces based on the current uses for the three restaurants and then the bank. And by utilizing the town's joint parking reduction, we were able to reduce the required parking down to 118 parking spaces. And what we have currently on our plan is 115 parking spaces. So what we're proposing to do is for the three additional spaces is just use the reserved parking area. And if three additional spaces are needed, it would be beneficial to have. What we would do is propose, and I can probably show it better on the site plan, is these spaces across the back could be restriped, as Brandon has identified on the site plan. We would gain one parking space on this parking bay and two parking spaces on this parking bay by restriping them to small parking spaces. You basically gain a foot for each space. Instead of nine feet wide, they would be eight feet wide. So we would get the 118 parking spaces. So understanding that the preference is to reduce parking or pavement as much as possible, this is what we proposed, and the Natural Resource Commission was very pleased to hear us using those different methods to reduce the parking requirement. So that's what we're proposing. It's 115 parking spaces. We're using the joint parking facilities as well as the reserve parking to get the requirement for 115 parking spaces. And then on the front with the peer reviewer, you know, we were working with GPI. They've provided two rounds of comments. Our initial one was 77 questions, mostly site-related. Probably, I think it was like 2/3, 1/3 of them were related to traffic. We were to respond to those. They've reviewed those, a response to comments. They provided us with their second round of comments on the 4th of December, and we were able to turn around and respond to those comments on the 7th of December. So those have been submitted as well. And I think we've worked hard to work with GPI, both responding to those comments in letters and offline, having some meetings to walk through some of the details. Because sometimes it's just, if you go by emails or even phone conversations, sometimes you can't understand what the concerns are and how things are put together. So we were able to kind of meet offline and come to a conclusion with a couple of points that were a little bit more complicated. So I think that's, I think those are the main updates. And we're happy to respond to any questions or answer any questions that you have related to civil and traffic. And I can respond if there's any questions about architecture. I can respond to those, too.
Okay. Thank you. I was going to ask if any board members had questions, and I see that Sue Felshen does.
This is a small question. If I recall correctly, from the last time you came before us, one of us asked you, now that you're proposing third restaurant use with a patio in back, how will you handle getting, people getting to the dumpsters from the two smaller proposed restaurant and coffee shop? Have you updated your plan for that, or is that still an ongoing process? Just curious.
No. So I can walk through, and maybe it might be better to show on the... Yeah, this will be fine. So before, we had a smaller dumpster here for the two restaurants. What we've done is explained to everyone that we're consolidating, and we're having one larger dumpster here where we'll just service it more frequently. So the tenants here will come out the back. We've created a vestana from Halverson, our landscape architect has created a nice little buffer. We'll have some fencing here, and you know, from time to time, as they need to dispense of the trash, they'll walk along here, come across here, and then navigate to the dumpster crawl.
Okay, so the answer is buffer and fencing so that the patio seating won't be disturbed by any transport of stuff? Great, thanks.
Any additional questions from members of the Board?
Have we clarified the traffic situation? Do we know, you know, what that is going to result in in terms of the traffic around that area? That's a question. If you've heard, I apologize.
Yeah, so we did update with the, with the change in use from the urgent care to the retail. Those were submitted to GPI as well with the change for that use. So I think the only question was like eastbound left-turn lane. I think there's some work that we're going to do with mass DOT as we go through the process with the highway access permit. So there were a couple of comments relative to that, and we've identified those. So we'll work, continue to work with Mass Highway. So being on a state road, we need to go through the highway access permit process with Mass DOT, so that's part of their view.
And what's your timeline on that?
So we had submitted already, and we had gotten 25% comments back from them. A couple of them were minor, but the main comment from the permits manager, she had brought the two comments from GPI relative to the curb cuts, adjacent curb cuts. So we worked with GPI to respond to those comments about the two curb cuts adjacent to us, and we'll be submitting that to Mass DOT as well. So we're ready to, once we're through this meeting tonight, we'll start proceeding and submitting our response there, 25% questions. So we're already in, and you know, we'll try to push that forward as quickly as possible.
And have you given us a sort of a number on what the traffic is going to be like, what the increase in traffic will be as a result of this development?
We have. So we submitted an updated traffic memo that incorporates both the current traffic as well as the future, and then includes the build. So adjacent to us is going to be the change in use from the Chinese food restaurant to a Dunkin' Donuts. That obviously adds additional traffic in the morning. So that has been incorporated in the traffic report, and obviously, we have, we're proposing a coffee shop, too. So there are two uses that are different. We had previously a 240-seat restaurant that was paparazzi. Our current seat count, just to maybe put it in seat totals, we are proposing 214 seats. So we're actually a little bit less than the current paparazzi. The difference is that our uses are a little bit different times. So we're leaning more towards morning with coffee shop and the Dunkin' Donuts. So that's why the traffic volume, that's the one line I'm, that ticked up a little bit. But otherwise, I think we're all within the range that DOT allows.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to recognize that Abby Flanagan has joined us. And then Elizabeth, you have some thoughts here?
I have, I do not have thoughts. I wanted to let the Board know that Rebecca Brown, the traffic engineer with GPI, the Board's consultant, is on. And if you'd like, she can give you an update on, and you know, fill you in as, you know, with what Carrie's comments were, and as well as provide some recommendations.
Yeah, great. I'd appreciate that.
That would be excellent. Welcome, Rebecca.
All right. Thank you very much. Yes, so we did get a copy of the latest traffic analysis that was prepared by the applicant, which was essentially looking at the change in use from the urgent care to a restaurant and reanalyzing the operations at the study area intersections. The results of that were fairly comparable to their first analysis that they put together when it was in urgent care, just because the type of restaurant that they're generating or that they're proposing for the morning doesn't generate a lot more traffic than in urgent care would. So the results of the analysis were pretty comparable. Overall, they've addressed all of our comments that we've had so far on the traffic analysis. The few comments that we had remaining, obviously, Carrie touched on it, were related to the driveways and their proximity to the two adjacent property driveways. They've satisfied the issue on the proposed Dunkin' Donuts side. On the other side, I know they're continuing to try and work with the Best Western to see what could be done about moving their driveway, but they have satisfied their own condition for their driveway of keeping it more than 15 feet away from the property line and keeping the radius away from the property line as well, so that the radius of their own driveway is entirely on their property. And so if and when the Best Western does ever get developed, that would be an opportunity to be able to modify their driveway if it can't be modified now. But if they're able to work with them further and get that to be modified now so that they can move that driveway 15 feet away, that would also be helpful. So one of our recommendations was potentially, since that driveway is an egress only, they could reduce it down to 16 feet in width. And obviously, Best Western would have to agree to allow them to do that, but it could potentially be reduced down to 16 feet in width so that it still provides adequate egress for emergency vehicles, and it gets them another eight feet of separation from the, from the property line so that they can at least pull their entire radius of their driveway onto their own property for the Best Western. So it won't quite satisfy the 15 feet, but it gets you very, very close, and it does get you the 30 feet of separation between the two driveways. The other thing that we noted in relation to the driveways itself was that traffic on Route 2 does quite frequently back up, as we all know, and it does back up onto Elm Street as well and occasionally pass the driveways during the peak hours. So one thing that we recommended was that they consider installing do-not-block intersection signage and pavement markings along Elm Street so that people aren't parked, you know, kind of across the driveways or queued up across those driveways during those peak times to allow people to be able to take a left-hand turn out of the driveway so that they can get access back out to Route 2 via the signal through that way. The other comments that we had were really all related to the Baker Avenue extension, the Elm Street ramps and Route 2 intersection, the signalized intersection there, and mainly related to that eastbound left turn onto the ramps, where in the morning peak hour, based on their projections with the Dunkin' Donuts traffic and their traffic and the Baker Avenue residential development that's also before the zoning board right now. With all of that traffic added in the morning, that intersection is anticipated to go over capacity for that eastbound left turn movement. So we had recommended that post-occupancy, they go back out, do some counts, take a look at it and see, you know, has all this traffic actually come to fruition? And does it need to be adjusted? And if so, adjust the signal timing accordingly. That is a high crash location. And based on some of the things that were identified in the road safety audit, the clearance intervals at that intersection may be an issue, so we did recommend that they review the clearance intervals. They have not done that to date, but that could be done in conjunction with the signal timing modifications at that intersection. So that was one of the recommendations that we had. And then the last one that we had was related to the signage for the jug handle itself. So if you're approaching the jug handle from Route 2, coming from the east, headed westbound, you'll notice that you pass by six or seven different signs, none of which ever tell you that you need to take a right-hand turn to make a left-hand turn onto Baker Avenue Extension. They all are labeled for Conquered Center. Some say right lane must turn right. And then when you finally find out that you're supposed to go that way to make a left-hand turn, you're all the way up to the intersection itself, and at that point, it's too late. So for anybody who's unfamiliar with the area, it can be very difficult. So we recommended that they work with Mass DOT to review that signage and potentially install some better signage out there that would be compliant with MUTCD and give proper direction to someone that they need to actually turn right to go left onto Baker Avenue Extension. And again, those improvements at that intersection would be all subject to Mass DOT review and approval because it is their jurisdiction there. But we did recommend that the applicant submit responses to our comments to Mass DOT as part of their next submission so that Mass DOT would have the opportunity to see the comments coming from the town and the concerns that the town has there as well as they're going through their review. And those were essentially the few comments that we had. Other than that, no significant impacts that they had at any of the other study area intersections or mitigation measures that were necessary at the other study area intersections. Those were the three main concerns, were the driveways itself for them being blocked, the adjacent driveways and their proximity to the site, and then the operations at that one intersection during the morning peak hour.
You've certainly articulated my concern. Anybody that's driven through there at, you know, 4 o'clock or 5 o'clock in the afternoon and stands, it gets all backed up. And I know paparazzi's had more seating, but it didn't seem to me to contribute to the problem. But I guess we'll have to see. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Rebecca, may I ask a question? First of all, I can't even say how many years I've been wanting a competent sign for the jug handle with a nice graphic warning people before it's too late to turn. But I noticed you said the intersection is projected to become overloaded with all of the traffic additions. And you suggested that in that case, the signals could be adjusted. Are you saying that if that happened and if the signals were adjusted, that that would be able to solve the problem? We would not get into a situation where there's simply so much traffic that there is no way to adjust the signals to allow traffic to go through without backing up excessively?
Yeah, so the problem is just the eastbound left turn movement in the morning peak hour. That's the movement that's going over capacity. The other movements at the intersection are projected to be under capacity during that time period. So they would be able to adjust the signal timing and give a little more time to that eastbound left turn movement to be able to allow that to function well and operate below capacity, and there would still be adequate capacity on the other approaches to the intersection.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
In your experience, is Mass DOT generally responsive to these sorts of requests? Or are there other avenues that a planning board or a town can take to support an applicant in these requests?
Sure. So yeah, Mass DOT usually is understanding, and they will take into account those types of comments. Obviously, the town isn't able to make a condition that requires something. You can request it pending Mass DOT approval if you wanted to put a condition on it. Mass DOT, for most of their projects that we've found in the last few years, has been requesting post-occupancy monitoring studies. So it's highly likely they would request that of the applicant anyway, particularly if any of the intersections are showing that they could go over capacity in the build condition. So it's likely that DOT will ask for that anyway from the applicant. But yeah, essentially, the town can provide their own letter to the DOT with the town's comments or their town's concerns, things that they would like to see. But and DOT will take that into account when they're considering their conditions for the permit.
I see. But we could apply a condition that those studies be done independent of Mass DOT requiring them, or not?
You could provide, you could have a condition that says that they have to provide a post-occupancy study that looks at what their impacts are, but you wouldn't be able to require them specific mitigation measures. So you could say, for example, like if they're all of a sudden generating three times the amount of traffic that they were anticipated to generate, that post-occupancy study would show you that. And then you might have conditions that would be things that they could do to reduce the number of trips that they're generating. For example, implementing some type of transportation demand management measures, things like that. You know, like employees carpooling, you know, providing bus service to the site, shuttles, things like that that can reduce down the trips. But you wouldn't then be able to require them to do any improvements on roads that are within the DOTs right away?
And in terms of pedestrian signage or crossing or crosswalks, anything there that you would recommend?
No, they've, they've provided a sidewalk out along the site frontage with crosswalks going across the two driveways. And other than that, they haven't provided any other pedestrian improvements out there. There's not, there's not a lot of great pedestrian connections out there today to be able to get across to the other side of Route 2, but I suspect that DOT is probably not going to require that either. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Elizabeth?
Sorry, my, my hand and my mouse aren't agreeing tonight. So Rebecca, would you be, you touched on a lot of really great points as far as recommendations. Is that something that, that you could follow up for the Board? Because they will be continuing this to review a draft decision with conditions that you could just provide a recommendation on various conditions that the Board could consider in their decision?
We can, yes.
Great, thank you very much. Okay. Any other questions from the Board? Then are there any individuals attending who have any questions on this particular application? Or public comment? If not, then thank you very much for the update. And could we, could anyone define a motion to continue the hearing?
Yes, I move to continue the public hearing on the application of Crosspoint Associates, Inc. under zoning bylaw section 11.8 for site plan review to demolish the existing restaurant building and construct a new one-story multi-tenant building with site improvements at 768 Elm Street, parcel number 1898, to January 16, 2024 at 7:05 p.m., and to accept a time extension to January 19, 2024.
Okay, I will...
So before you take a second, I would just like some agreement from Carrie that they agreed to grant the time extension to January 19.
Correct. We agree to extend to January 19.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Rob seconded.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear, okay, I'll call the role, um Mark Giddings.
Yes.
Abby Flanagan.
Yes.
Sue Felshen.
Hi.
Andrew Boardman.
Yes.
Rob Almeida.
Yes.
And myself, Linda Miller, yes. Okay, thank you very much for attending tonight, we'll look forward to seeing you next year, happy new year.
Very true, awesome, thank you everyone.
Thank you. Um. So given the um time, we will move on now to um annual town meeting warrant articles. And I think we will begin with the discussion of the MBTA Communities article. Um Elizabeth, do you want to? Put that up, um.
I will.
Share your screen or?
Yes. Um, I will bring, I will bring that up and um. Sue, I did see your email, um did you want to go through? Not not the 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 formatting or uh minor changes, but you did have some questions or um.
I do, yes, I have um some outstanding questions, not that first one, which is just about um how we. Case it, and then the next one is. Under item two, oh, I can't see, I need to look at my own to tell which comments. Are real comments, nope, not that second one either, uh. I don't think that third one counts as substantive either, so that brings me to the second. Page uh where ah in the table under seven point eleven point three dimensional requirements. Um. Nope, that first one is also just on punctuation, so that brings me down to the next page under sub district. Three, and I wanted to know why have we not specified a maximum density in sub district? Three, when we have in sub districts one, two, I am fine with not specifying one, but it seemed like we meant to.
Um. We do.
Okay. All right, so I guess that is. Not particularly substantive, and the same comment holds for sub district four and sub district five. So if you just fling those in, that will. Uh do that, and then that brings us on to sub district. Four, now in sub district. Four, I noticed that the setback for the the uh requirement on the of the primary street setback. So that's uh row one of the table. Is twenty feet, but if we look at the other sub districts, um uh one and two, the setback is ten feet and. In the uh. Elm Street District. I understand why we would have a setback. Of twenty feet because it is so close to Route two, and that could be a major noise issue, not to mention um so much exhaust coming from nearby. But is this just an oversight on sub district four, or if there is a reason for the twenty feet? I would like to know what? And that applies actually to the rear yard setback as well, why do we have a larger? Rear, front and rear setback in sub district four, and I would like to suggest that we not do that. And that we have the same um rear yard setback as we do in the other districts.
Um, those are what the current setbacks are in for Baker Ave. Which is limited uh. Limited industrial park. So this, the minimum. Side. Uh uh. No, I do have glasses, hold on.
Well, I could see that um it is typical in Concord that for a variety of. Um, limited business and business park and so forth. Uh zoned areas, we have very deep setbacks, which in many cases I question the value of. But leaving that aside here, this is an overlay for the purpose of. Um making this be residential, so it seems to me that it would make sense to have. Residential values for setbacks. Particularly for primary streets because it obviously isn't even backing on um uh some other. Business or industrial use, but even for the rear setback as well.
So that's just what the current, the current setbacks are for the underlying zoning, so um.
I do understand that, but I'm suggesting, I I'm bringing it up as a uh discussion point that we should not do that be on grounds that. Here, we are allowing a different use residential, and we should have a residential sized. Setback as in districts one and two. So I don't know if the board wants to consider that, or if I should go on to mention a few other points about the dimensional requirements.
Um. Well, I think, I think it's a a good topic of discussion, I think originally we had said to people that we would go with the existing. Underlying requirements, but um.
And if we modify the setbacks, but the person doesn't change the use. So if they're in an overlay district, does that? Would they be able to build something closer to the lot line as a single family, just to maximize their own yard? If you modify the setbacks?
So this um the zoning and these dimensional requirements would only pertain to somebody who was building a multifamily. Um project under this zoning section, so it would. Um be applicable to anything else.
And furthermore, Baker Ave is not single family, so it. Wouldn't change that either, and also the single family setback is fifteen feet in districts that are zone single family.
So it's a conversation for the board, I don't, I don't.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have any input on this, I'm just telling you why it's the way it was. When we started, but it's definitely open for. Um, open for conversation and change, it's. Um, it's not going to. Drastically change the compliance model, I'm not worried about that, so it's.
If anything, it would benefit the compliance model, yes, Elizabeth?
It might allow possibly an extra. Unit somehow, but it wouldn't have a substantive effect.
Right.
But it wouldn't reduce the number of allowable units.
Give me, give me two seconds and I'll let you know.
Wow, quick work.
Well, uh, let me just check what else I had. Do you see the, do you still see the draft zoning?
Yes.
I. I never know when I change one, once, only one screen, what's gonna happen, so um. Alright, so that is um. Sub district four, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so. So. Currently, um. The. You, the unit capacity is at one thousand one hundred and ninety-eight. Um, so if I change. Sub district four. Um. And what are your, what are you proposing, the same as the others, ten?
The.
Ten, uh, fifteen?
Uh, I'm just checking what the others are, they are ten and fifteen, so yes, that is what I'm suggesting, and I'm also suggesting that in sub district five. We change the rear setback to the same fifteen, but I'm not suggesting that we change the primary street setback on grounds of it being so close to Route two.
Um. Um. But that does not change the unit capacity.
Huh. How odd that one can't fit even a single extra unit, and maybe there's excluded land back there, and that's the issue, hmm?
I don't know, um.
Well, if it doesn't change the unit capacity, I guess it makes. A- and is that true of Elm Street as well, if we change the rear setback to be fifteen instead of twenty?
Did change Elm Street as well.
Uh, no change, okay, so I guess that makes my point utterly moot. I was hoping we could get in. Just a teensy bit more.
We're asking the town to change a lot, I think if we can keep it. The way it is now, I think it might make it easier for people to accept it. My two cents.
It, it doesn't seem to me that it's offering a developer that much. More incentive, so I probably would leave it as is. Were there?
No.
Go through the rest?
Were there other um comments that you had, Sue?
No, that was everything, well, all the other comments were just about um formatting or case or singular versus plural, non-substantive comments.
Okay. Um. So I, other than those corrections, I think the the key issue. Or one key issue we wanted to stuck discuss was the um affordability. Component. Tonight, I don't think we came to a resolution um at our last meeting.
Well, I liked the proposed language that uh with the additional paragraph of uh if HLC determines that twenty percent is not feasible, et cetera. I'm definitely in favor of putting twenty percent into the warrant article on grounds that. If there is some reason to, we can always have the motion. Um. Be for a smaller percentage, but if we don't have the warrant article, say twenty percent, we can't amend it higher later.
So my, my other, um my other concern is um thirteen B Commonwealth Ave is kind of.
Can you speak up a little, Elizabeth?
Is that better?
Yeah.
Um, my, my other concern is thirteen B Commonwealth Ave is somewhat of a, a kind of an indicator where. They had eight units at twenty percent, um and that is not financially feasible for them, and you know, they are now looking at. Um, twenty. Twenty units at twenty percent. Being the tipping point, so my concern. Is not just. The, the twenty percent number, my concern is also ten units or more at twenty percent, so um. I, 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 I don't, I don't see the economic feasibility analysis coming back in and. And he's going to do the economic feasibility analysis based on ten, ten units of or more at twenty percent. Um, and. Is it gonna come back that? Ten units at, you know, ten percent? I don't know, um. So the conversation is that, you know, ten units at ten percent, or you you up it to say, you know, twenty units at. Twenty percent, and that might not be financially feasible, but maybe fifteen percent. Um, is, so it's. It, it's a, it's kind of a numbers game. Um.
From, from the numbers game part of it, does your fancy model tell you how many? Parcels have a carrying capacity that are that high?
It would be hard to tell though, because it is possible to take existing parcels and combine them, thus creating a larger parcel that would have a larger.
Yeah, I was just more, I was just more going from the. The, the assuming that it's one parcel.
Right. And in fact, I suppose we would be creating an incentive for people to subdivide parcels, so uh except that. Uh the cost of building two buildings is so much higher than one building or or connected buildings that. That would probably take away that incentive.
Um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna share my screen again. And so. To your question, Andrew, um so in the compliance model, we have um district one, which is. Um, one hundred Main Street, one hundred Lowell Road, Concord Market, it's made up of these. Five, um five parcels. Um, based on those five parcels and the um excluded land. And that gets removed. Through the state's compliance model, um which. Again, only takes into consideration taking out the excluded land setbacks. Um, two parking spaces per dwelling unit. Um, it, it does not take into other factors of, okay, where's, where's your trash, where's? You know, is there open space, and so it doesn't. Um, it doesn't take into those, so I. When you look at the final lot, multifamily unit capacity, um this to me is, you know. The unrealistic high end, because it doesn't take into account all those other services, so. Um, you know, this is what you're, you know, what you're looking at, so only, only one of them. States that you could do, you know, ten units. Um. And then we get to district two, which is. Um like Concord Oil, Concord Lumber. Um, and. It's, um, again, there's only. One is at nine, and the others are much greater than that.
Wait a second, have we included two parcels in that district upon which nothing can be built?
Um, based on the dimensional requirements. You would not be able to build a three-family based on the dimensional requirements. And the.
And yet.
And the parking.
And yet somehow under state law, we're allowed to came claim credit for including parcels upon which nothing can get built.
Well, you're, you're allowed to take credit for the area, you don't get any credit towards your, your. Um, capacity requirement.
Yeah.
Um, so district three. Um, again, it's, it's really only. Um. One, two, three, four parcels out of all of those, out of that whole list of parcels. Um, you know, four, four, you have ten, five, four, five. Um. District four is three hundred Baker Ave, you know, this is where you, you have much larger parcels. And then district five is Elm Street. Um, where again, you have, you know, the larger parcels. And but. Again. There's nothing. There's nothing lower than ten, so um to Andrew's question. That's the information we have.
Well, you brought up an interesting point a couple of minutes ago, Elizabeth, about the economic analysis, and it makes me wonder. What we need to do. And it makes me wonder what we need to do to get things included in the economic analysis. For example, we could say, um, that if there's 10 or more units, if there's 10 to 19 units, then one of them has to be, uh, uh, 20% of them have to be at 150% of AMI. But if it's 20 or more units, then any additional affordable units have to be at 80% AMI and included on the SSHI. And it's hard for me to say on the spot whether that's even what I support. I just wonder, would that mean that it would get included in the economic analysis? Or is there, or, or can the specification of the economic analysis be written up separately from the warrant article so that we could try to decide how to amend the warrant article into a motion depending on what the economic analysis showed for 80% AMI versus 120 or 150%?
Um, I don't know the answer, that the answer to that completely. Um, I, I do know that we, we do not get any say into how the economic, the economic feasibility analysis is done. Um, that is, um, something that HLC is a part of their guidelines. Uh, and, you know, working with the consultant on that. Um, the consultant has certain parameters that they are being required to follow. Um, I can tell you that, um, they will take the language from our, our zoning and factor that into their analysis for only new construction. Um, they, they will not, they do not include in the economic feasibility analysis um, rehabilitation, retrofit or anything like that. It, it only looks at new construction. But as far as, um, as, as far as whether the board wants to, at this point, consider having a structured, some tiered affordability requirement, that's, that's not a question I could answer on the fly right now.
But they do at least, um, take our proposed zoning bylaw into account when performing it, even though we have no say over how they perform it.
Right. So if it says 10 units or more at 20%, that's what they will evaluate.
So if we're, if we're it's a, um, it's a risk that we have to take, but if, as to what kind of analysis that we think we can get them to make for us. But if we're really pretty sure that the economic analysis of 20% affordable units at 80% of AMI for 10 or more units. If we're sure that between 10 and units, it's 10 and 20 units, it's going to come back as, yeah, in your dreams. That's not economically feasible. Then there's no point us proposing that because all they'll do is tell us, yeah, that won't work. Instead, we should propose something that might have a prayer of actually coming back as economically feasible. But again, we'd have to make a decision about what we hazard a guess that might be.
But my understanding was that Lexington um, proposed, um, uh, both 20%, which didn't work, and then 15%, which just worked, but they used an um, project size of 24. And my understanding was that, um, HLC had problems with that and wanted to see a reanalysis with a smaller size, um, of a project. So maybe, may, maybe you can uh, go too far in the other direction, too.
Right. But in terms of, um, we have two knobs we can twiddle. Uh, the, well, three knobs, the percentage affordable, the minimum number of units for it to apply and the level of AMI. And we got a pretty good guess at how these things go from looking at Lexington for a percent affordable versus minimum number of units at 80% AMI. But we could try twiddling another knob and say, um, we want a minimum number of 10% units at 8% AMI, uh, but what if the other 10% was at a higher AMI? Because this is, this is about missing metal housing. Um, and 80% is, you know, very strictly affordable and a much higher AMI might not be such a bad thing. If we can squeeze a, a few extra percent in. I don't know if I make, there's so many numbers. I feel that every time I say this, even my own eyes glaze over.
Um, Elizabeth, can you, can the feasibility analysis run different scenarios? Or will they only run the one scenario that we are submitting for on the article?
I'm not entirely, um, I, I believe, um, I believe they will, they will run the scenario for as far as the number of units and then different percentages. Um, I, I don't know if they'll run multiple units and percentages, um, as well, but I can, I can, I can find out for sure.
Well, our warrant articles are due at the end of the week and yet the warrant doesn't close.
No, draft, draft warrant articles are asked to be submitted by the end of the week.
I'm just wondering if we can, um, come up tonight with our best guess, but still be able to tweak it at our meeting on the 19th.
Yes.
If, if you'd be able to get any further clarity, do you think?
Yes.
Before then, Elizabeth?
Yes.
Right. That's, thanks for your answer.
Our experience tells us that anything less than 20 units, it's difficult to build affordable housing into it and make it economically efficient.
Affordable housing at 80% AMI? Yes, but that's why I'm asking about affordable housing.
I understand.
Yeah. Lowercase a.
It's more complicated.
Yeah. What I'd like to propose is that I will, um, I will send off an email, um, tonight. Um, and I can, um, ask if, um, if they can, if they, if he can do the multiple scenario, um, what factors would the board like me to put in? As far as number of units and affordability? As far as the, the percentage?
Well, I would say if it's 20 or more, I propose that if it's 20 or more units, we stick with 20% at 80% AMI, but with those two step backs of if HLC says no go, we try 15% or 10% for economic feasibility. Well, we don't need to try 10%. That's the base. That's just our fallback. But that between 10 and 19 units, we ask whether we can get economic feasibility at 15% of units at 80% AMI versus, um, 20% of units at insert percentage of AMI here. And then I, I'm not sure what percentage.
I'm, I'm very reluctant to throw that new
Right.
parameter into the discussion 22 days before the warrant closes. Where no one has had that conversation about anything other than 80% AMI. Um, I'm, I'm very reluctant and cautious to have the board begin a conversation um, about something like that new. Um, I, I think you can do, um, you know, 10 units at 20%, 15%, 10% or 20 units at 20%, 15%, 10%. Um, ask, you know, the feasibility, feasibility analysis to run those, those two scenarios.
Well, then that's what we want. We want the feasibility on 20 plus units at 20% or 15% versus the feasibility analysis of 10, 10 or more units at 20% versus 15%. And there's no reason to look at 10% because we're gonna demand 10% regardless. I assume. No?
Shall we take public comment on this issue of affordability? Is it? Keith, what, you can weigh in on this if you have some knowledge of, um, what other towns are doing.
Thanks. Keith Bergman, 56 White Ave, Chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. Um, the, my understanding of the, uh, on the, uh, MBTA Communities zoning is that if you're going to do inclusionary, it's, it's at 80% of AMI. Uh, if you, uh, and, or that you, uh, whether it's a 10% or 15% or 20% of the, of the, of the units, it only requires a simple majority vote of town meeting. If, if you're adding other elements like some other, something other than 80% of AMI or, or something outside the parameters of MBTA community zoning, you're probably wandering into, uh, zoning changes that would require a two thirds vote. Inclusionary zoning per se, uh, is a two, is a two thirds vote. So I think you want to stick, uh, uh, slavishly to MBTA communities zoning with this article. And that would give you, I think, uh, if, uh, I would hope that you will include a minimum of 10%, which, which, uh, would not require an, an economic feasibility analysis, but also to explore whatever higher percentage you think we can actually get. And as, and as the chair said, uh, Lexington, uh, uh, was able to justify 15% uh, of, of the, of the units, uh, uh, in its, uh, economic feasibility analysis, which I'm presuming now, since the Secretary of Housing and Livable Communities announced today that Salem and Lexington are the first communities to be in full compliance uh, with, with their zoning, that, that Lexington has passed the final hurdle on that 15% has been approved. Um, so, uh, if you, if you've got the time, uh, you know, I, I think the highest number that you think you can justify uh, and with the fallback position of, of 10% affordability. And if you've got the time between now and your next meeting to finalize that, that I think that would be time well spent to look at that issue. But thanks so much for all the work that you've done, uh, to get us this far. The housing groups, uh, were, were, we were all briefed last night at the Market Housing Roundtable Quarterly Meeting and, um, we're, uh, the groups are, uh, looking forward to, uh, uh, bringing this, uh, to cross the finish line at town meeting. And thanks for your leadership.
Thank you. Um, so Elizabeth, do you, uh, want to reflect on that and, um, put in as our basic um, 20 and 20 and then going down to 20 and 15 should need be?
Definitely. So I will, um, soon as this meeting's over, I will send that out to um, the consultant to get his feedback and then, um, work to finalize the scope of work.
And Elizabeth, I think that's exactly what the tonight's draft article already says.
Um, yes, it says, uh, well, it, it, what it will say is, um,
It says 20 with a fallback to 15 with a fallback to 10, depending on the affordability analysis.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, um, shall we take additional public comment on the MBTA Communities Act? Uh, Laura Davis?
Hi there, Laura Davis. I'm, uh, 330 Garfield Road. I am a member of the Transportation Advisory Committee, but I am speaking on my own behalf. Um, first, I want to apologize that my feedback is coming so late in the game. I appreciate all the work that has gone into this process and I'm really sorry that I didn't speak up sooner. Um, I just want to voice that I am really disappointed with where we are now, um, especially with Sub District Five, the Elm Street area. I am dismayed that we have taken an approach that seems designed to minimize the number of multifamily units um, that can be built. Um, and even in the limited cases where we can produce units, it seems like these apartments are going to be very segregated from the rest of the community. And I think that that's a loss for us as a community. And I completely understand the need to create a proposal that has a high likelihood of passing a town meeting. Um, but I do feel like this map really robs the residents of Concord an opportunity to vote for the future that we say that we want, one that is really sustainable and inclusive. Um, one aspect of the proposal I just want to point out that I found unsettling is the fact that um, we've included so many parcels that currently house our fossil fuel infrastructure here in town. Concord Oil and four of our gas stations are in these sub districts. And for me, as somebody who works on climate and environmental justice, that stood out to me as a problem. Um, I don't believe that, uh, we should be segregating our multifamily buildings onto some of the most undesirable parcels in like, uh, in the community. Um, I would find it much more preferable to have some three family buildings in some of the single family neighborhoods that are next to the transit stations, especially because Sub District Five is right next to the highway, which has health and safety concerns for the future residents that might live there if there are ever units produced there. Um, as I said, I'm really sorry that this is coming at the 11th hour. I know that we're coming up against deadlines, but I did want to voice that, um, these concerns. Um, if, if it was possible, I would ask you to, uh, request that you consider expanding the area um, in this, of, in the sub, of, with a few parcels in the subjects, districts that are located within a half mile radius of the transit stations so that we have some flexibility in some of these very undesirable locations. Um, I know that we can't add anything once the warrant closes. So I hope that we can expand some of the more desirable locations for transit oriented development. Um, so that we're not faced with this binary decision at town meeting. Either we accept the map exactly as it is, or we reject it and fall out of compliance with MBTA communities, which I know would be disastrous for us as a community. Um, so I just wanted to voice that and thank you very much for all of the work. I know that managing this process is a huge task and you are all very hardworking. Um, and I have so much respect for what you guys do. So thank you.
Um, well, thank you for your feedback. Um, as you know, we are, um, going to be talking about other articles. Um, and one that you may be interested in is, um, one that we'll be discussing, uh, with regard to the Residence uh, B zoning area where we are hoping that, um, we'll be able to, um, have duplexes, um, by special permit. So I think, um, we would agree, um, we were only able to get a little over 50% um, of the district, uh, in the, the transit areas around the commuter rail stations. Um, it, it was, uh, challenging, uh, to do that. Um, but I think that, um, the feedback we got was that people were willing to see a transition, but not all at once. And I think the MBTA felt like kind of a, a big bang as opposed to, um, an evolution toward a more transit oriented, um, centered, uh, district. So in that regard, um, you know, please continue to revisit and look for opportunities. where we can achieve more lofty goals. And and I'm sorry if if this has fallen short, but we had a lot of community interaction. And we tried a lot to get a lot of outreach and try and find something that that looks like it's a progress in terms of introducing multifamily housing by right into Concord with areas that would be suitable for it. But it it's, you know, going to be a longer process. But I think one that we want to be a bit more organic and move in different directions. So keep keep that message coming and think creatively. And if you see other districts or opportunities where things are suitable and where we have some evidence that we can move forward on that, we'd like to. But I think right now, it's unfortunately, it's been a good six or eight months moving this process forward, and I don't know that we can, at this point, change those areas. In in terms of that one district Elm Street, right now, there are people living there. So and and I also think that trying to take fossil fuel oriented businesses and offer them an opportunity to perhaps proactively move out of that business into housing is is maybe not the worst thing. So we'll see. But but again, thank you for your comments. I think there's Betsy. You can introduce yourself. Thank you. If you have comments. Did I lose Betsy? Okay. Any additional thoughts on the MBTA article?
Oh, hi, I'm I apologize. This is Betsy Olson-McKowski at seventeen forty-one Wedgwood Common. And I just wanted to kind of echo a little bit of what Laura was saying. And also affirm that any housing development is a positive step forward in the town of Concord. So I do appreciate the work that you all have done. And just want to put my voice out there that I am in support of, you know, multifamily housing opportunities throughout the town of Concord. Thanks.
Thanks, Betsy. Karen Silver. Did you wish to comment? You're unmuted, I believe. Karen, your hand is up if you'd like to make a comment. Not hearing anything, I'm I'm sorry. Perhaps we'll move on. And if you can figure out your technology, we can come back to you. But I think perhaps we should move on with the other articles. So I think next we'll look at the Floodplain Conservancy District. See if we can approve that one. Elizabeth?
Yeah.
Thanks.
I sent the, I mean, the final, the final version. Sue, I don't think you had any other comments, right?
I don't think so. I I found a comma somewhere. Did I send it to you? Oh, me, I already did. I had no further comments.
So I would say this draft is ready to go.
Do we need a motion to submit the Floodplain Conservancy District article to?
Well, what I'd what I'd probably, what I'd probably like to do is take all of these after tonight and just one more round, send them all off to Town Council. And then at your meeting on the nineteenth, have the board actually vote to submit them to the warrant. If we can get these submitted before, early, it would make my Christmas. That would be my 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 ask of the board, if they don't mind.
Okay, well, we know you're on the not the nice category, not the naughty, so we're going to work hard on that, Elizabeth. Okay. Do we want to discuss now the housekeeping article?
So you have not received this one yet.
Okay.
We will receive it. We'll we'll have it finished tomorrow. And I will, I will send it off to Town Council for your meeting on your meeting on the nineteenth. But let me, let me, let me show you, let me show you what it looks like. So based on the conversation with Town Council and the Town Moderator, putting the warrant article into the same format as all your others. So we added, great, we added highlight to these because the warrant has to be, and this yellow right here is just input, needing to get input from Town Council on how the actual wording needs to happen. But we tried this in many different ways. The town meeting warrant is printed in black and white. So everything has to be legible in black and white. So we added the highlight to try and make it more legible because if you notice that this right here, this right here is the amendment. It's it's deleting a comma. So. So that's going to be very challenging for people to see. So from a format perspective, that's what we tried to do.
That's very clever, actually, the gray highlight that makes it marginally possible that people will see commas added or deleted.
So this is something that we can do for, you know, the other warrant articles other than the MBTA. But so that's that's just the formatting question. But so going through and taking all of the changes and adding them, we're up to fifteen pages.
Okay.
And I don't think. Yes, I, yeah, so fifteen pages. So I am going to, we'll, this will be finished up tomorrow. It'll go out to the board. I will send it off to the Town Moderator and Town Council to start getting their feedback on this. And then the board will have to go through this at your meeting next week. That's where it's at.
Okay, and I think it would be very helpful to get comments from the moderator and from Town Council. And and then I'm sure we'll get comments from the public hearing that will be useful as well. Okay. And then finally, the Residence B.
I don't, I don't think there were any, were any revisions. The number of two-family dwelling units may change after Thursday night. There is one special permit on the board's agenda for Thursday night. Depending on what happens, you know, I will change this section or not. But there have been no other significant changes to this following Town Council's comments. And Sue's view as well.
Well, that would be a large percentage change, so we'll wait for that.
Oh, one? Oh, yes. We go from four to five and.
Okay. So we'll move those forward. And then I think our next agenda item would be the recommendation to the ZBA for the Concord Housing Development Corporation for a special permit and site plan review under zoning bylaws sections ten, eleven point six and eleven point eight for a five-unit planned residential development at four oh six Old Marlboro Road, parcel number twenty-seven thirty-two. And I think we have several individuals here representing the applicant. Could they introduce themselves? And I think we're going to have an initial presentation. Thanks for coming.
Yes, thank you, Linda. Richard Harrington from Harrington Associates. Also with me is Lee Smith, the Chair from the CHGC, and Julie McClure from the CHD also. And possibly a couple others. We are here to discuss the recommendation for affordable housing via the planned residential developments. Elizabeth, did you want to share the screen or did you have the plans up?
You can, you can share your screen. That's usually easier.
I can figure that out. Having trouble finding that.
Unless you need me to bring it up, that's.
Yeah, if you could. My apologies. Oh, here we go. I found the shared screen.
Oh, okay.
Can you see the screen now, the plan?
Yep.
So what we have is four oh six Old Marlboro Road at the bottom. We have a sidewalk across the frontage. And we have an existing two-family, one-bedroom per unit. And then we have a walkway that's proposed in the front. We're closing two curb cuts in the front. There was a gravel driveway on the right-hand side of the building and one on the left. We're proposing a private driveway that's at the location furthest from the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail to the right of the plan here. And for safety purposes, we met with Justin Richardson, the assistant town engineer, the property, to discuss that aspect. We'll then be providing a twenty-foot-wide private driveway down. And we'd have two spaces for Unit A and two spaces for Unit B to comply with zoning. And then they'd have a walkway from their spaces up to the front doors of Units four oh six A and four oh six B. Those are existing unit numbers. I propose then to continue a twenty-foot wide. It'll open up the twenty-two feet at the curvature, which matches your cul-de-sac requirements for your subdivision. So as a fire truck comes around the curvature, it'll be just like turning around in a cul-de-sac. And then we'd have Building One, which is Unit C, which would be number four oh six C. And we're adding three spaces, two per zoning and then one for visitor, so that we'd have a space off the private driveway for a visitor for this. Heading forward, we have a T-turnaround with a radius of twenty-five foot on the inside curvatures. And then we'd have Unit D, which is another three-bedroom building, too, with three spaces on this side here off of the turnaround side. And then at the back end, we rotated the dwelling ninety degrees. And it's a four-bedroom design so that we would have two one-bedrooms existing, a three-bedroom, a three-bedroom, then a four-bedroom dwelling to meet the needs and criteria of the affordable housing groups within the town. And then we would have a walkway off with three spaces in front of the dwelling, and we'd have a walkway to Unit Building Three, Unit E. So instead of having a private driveway with a street name, it seemed to make sense to just go with Units A, B, C, D, and E so that they could just be one street, one street name number off of Old Marlboro Road. We have town water off along the frontage. We're proposing just to bring it into a height up to the top left and then have water surfaces go to each building. And then we have a septic system for Unit A. D and C would come down on this side, and then we'd have a septic system for E up the top. We have low-impact development. So as you come down from the the entrance, we're about five, four feet lower at this location. We'd have a bio-retention area to accept the first inches of runoff, and then we'd have it overflow into a subsurface recharge area. And then to completely recharge and control the runoff from this pavement. We'd have another bio-retention area, number two, with the gallery number two for the area within the middle of the driveway. And then we have a third one at the turnaround at this location here with recharge below. And then we have a fourth bio-retention area for the roof area for Building Three. So playing a little bit of leapfrog, as you can see, with not having any septic systems under any pavement, having low-impact development and meeting the criteria for parking spaces and access, which the twenty-foot minimum with. In addition, this is because we're providing more than seventy-five percent affordable dwellings, we are allowed to have some flexibility from all the criteria of of a planned residential development. So what we have is reduced, we have no setbacks to property lines, but we are providing separation off the property lines for dwellings to have green space around each building. For the architectural elevations by Lee Stone. Let's get back to the beginning here. This is Building One or Unit C, the the front elevation to the top left. So when you're driving, you're going to see a front porch at the front entrance there where the parking space is to the right of that. You can see the left elevation where you'd have a couple steps out to an outdoor patio. The rear elevation, the bottom left, is facing the rail rail trail and then the right side elevation with an additional door. The first floor of this building, so. So we have a dining area, family room, study, entry, and kitchen. And then we'd have three bedrooms upstairs. And then for the second building, we have front elevation here. So when you come around to the turnaround, you have a front porch facing the other dwelling, Unit E. This right side elevation is what you're going to see as you pass the house on the driveway. Second floor, it's a three-bedroom design. Rear elevation, right elevation, rear elevation on the left-hand side and left-side elevation facing the rail trail. Well, facing the woods first, then there's the rail trail. The last unit, which is the four-bedroom design, we have a front porch that's going to be presenting on the front. And then we have a rear elevation for the walkout with a patio and the side door with the walkway coming around from the front to the side entry door where I believe is a mudroom. So on the first floor elevation for Building Three, Unit E, you have a portico in the front with a couple additional steps added just because of the elevations. You'd go into the entry, you'd have a family room, dining, and kitchen. But on the left-hand side, you have a mudroom that comes in with a study also. And then the second floor shows your four bedrooms upstairs to meet the the diversity of dwelling units of a four-bedroom, two-three bedrooms, and two existing one-bedroom up front. We have a septic plan that's designed. And what we basically have is we have, it's a condominium, one ownership. So it's one facility underneath Title V and the local Board of Health regulations. What we've been able to do is to provide a septic tank for each house. So it's it's just cuts down the number of manhole structures. And then we'd have individual distribution boxes and trenches for each house, each building itself. So that's been submitted to the Board Health to review. It's all gravity, no pumps or anything like that. And it's it meets the setbacks from the property lines and it offsets from drainage. And then we have the landscape plan from Jennifer Lemon-Brooke, Landscape Architects. So what you see at the entrance is the specifications for some plantings around the existing building, the walkway. the specifications for some plantings around the existing building, the walkway detail. She has some plantings up the top right for, within the rain gardens. At Building 1, Unit C, there's some plantings in the front and on the side door entry. Same thing with Building 2, Unit D, some plantings in the front. And then Building 3 also, you know, to complement the portico on the front of the building, some plantings there. And each dwelling would have a tree also in the front yard as well with the planting ledges at the top right and the materials. And we're proposing a privacy fence along the left-hand side. You'll see a mulch bed here for the abiding dwelling, number 416. And when you look at the full-page photos, here's our front elevation of the Units A and B. They have a gravel parking on the right, front entry. This is the right elevation facing the rail trail. And you can see the back steps and then the roof leaders. This, the back of the dwelling is the bulkhead. There's an upper and lower set of stairs to get to the different levels with the stairs coming out down to there. On the left elevation, so we'd be driving by, this is where the fourth parking space will be for the existing building. And then this is the 416 where that mulch bed is here. So there's already some screening in place from the abiding dwelling. We're proposing to put a fence, a privacy fence, starting about at the door for the garage here, back to the corner. So when we're exiting the property with the headlights, we will cut down the glare into the first little windows of the abiding property. What you have is a project narrative. It gives you some history in the backgrounds of the progress to date of the improvements they've done to the existing building itself, given its age of over 126 years old. As the current proposal is to convey the two one-bedroom apartments to the Concord Housing Authority, who will lease the units to low-income tenants under the project-based voucher program. And then at the bottom of this page, it gives you the breakdown of the number of bedrooms, the baths, and the square footages of each dwelling proposed for the single families. The PRD criteria, Section 10, when you break it down, like we said, because we're a nonprofit entity for the applicant, being the Concord Housing, there's special provisions for a nonprofit entity where certain items shall not apply. So instead of having to have 80,000 square feet, we have 43,560, which just is an acre. And that was selected by the committees that decided to protect the open space, and they provide enough space for us to build the housing. Five dwelling units are proposed. The diversity of dwelling units, as we talked about, it's two one-bedrooms, two three-bedrooms, and a four-bedroom. The single-family and two-family are permitted uses. The lot area, frontage, and yard requirements, the C, the buildings are proposed approximately 10 feet from the boundary line of the PRD as opposed to typical requirement 20 feet. And this is a requirement that shall not apply to this application, provided that the board deems it applies with the intent. We're accessing from a public way. We'll meet the height of each building. And the area of residential development, again, it does not apply as far as open space and common open space and things of that nature, because the intent is to provide affordable housing. We are sustainable design. We utilize natural drainage patterns and incorporating bio-retention areas. And there's also some, there will be no gas lines going to the proposed buildings. And but the existing gas line, I think, will remain in place because the heating systems were somewhat newer, so that was just a cost savings aspect for that. Section 1116 of the zoning, impacts on economic and community needs. Proposal creates five new units of permanently-dated restricted affordable housing, a number sufficient to bring Concord across the 10% threshold. The proposal improves the traffic flow and sightline adjacent to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. We have adequate utilities with town water, gas, electric underground. The construction homes are designed to blend with the neighborhood character and are sited to fit the topography and aspects of the site. Lee Stone is the architect of the two abiding properties, being 416 on the left-hand side, and then the additions put on the right-hand side on the opposite side of the Freeman Trail. We're protecting the open space. Everything is good sanding gravel. We're recharging everything on the property. And then as far as site plan review, we believe that this criteria that we're proposing protects everything and provides convenient and safety. It provides the adequacy for parking and loading, typical single-family lighting outside. The structures are spaced out, so it resembles the single-family character of the neighborhood. Typical utilities, private septic, town water. And the sustainability, the new construction homes will be fossil fuel-free, and the existing two units have been converted to heat pumps already. And that's kind of the narrative there. And there's a couple comments about the water, the water main extension. There's two options we could do. We propose bringing a water main in and dead-ending to have a hydrant on the property with services coming off of that. The other option is we could put a hydrant on the street and just run services off of the main in Old Marlboro Road, if that's, as opposed to going through a waiver per their policy for that. And then for fire, we'll have to provide them some churning templates. But what we were able to do is work with the 80-foot width that we do have on the property that was provided to us while providing snow storage also along the perimeter. And so overall, that the plan set for these for the PRD, we have the locust plan on the left-hand side. We have the existing conditions, which shows that right now, we're gonna be closing the two curb cuts on each side of the dwelling. Here's your septic tank and leach field. There's a request to not have that underneath the pavement, which is why we moved over to the trenches behind the building with the remaining woodland in this location here. This is just our master plan layout, so it just shows you the width and dimensions of the parking spaces and how we meet that criteria. We're proposing some dash exclusive use areas so that there'll be dedicated space for the yard areas for each of the buildings and for the families. And then we have a utility plan. Site development plan, this shows a proposed grading for the road as it goes down. So we're basically at 147 at the entrance. We're 149 way to the tip of the property, and in between, we're down to 143 in the middle, at two low points abiding. The the protected open space on the there's a swale through the middle here. That's why we're gonna basically have a rain garden in that location also. Just a utility plan, it shows the breakdown and the right-hand side of all the the volumes in each one to treat the first inch of runoff. We have the details for the bio-retention area and the subsurface galleys. Instead of having higher-cost pretreatment like catch basins and deep sumps on the bottom left here, we're proposing these rain garden turrets as opposed to a stone apron. These are currently used up at the University of New Hampshire parking lots. And also they're used in Ogunquit downtown in the parking lots where they have the islands with the rain gardens in the parking lots to mitigate the first flush. They're very user-friendly and easy to maintain as opposed to having a deep sump, which requires a truck to come by. You can just lift this up and clean it out. And it seems to be a very good addition to the low-impact criteria. Roach control plans, we'll have protecting the entire perimeter when we clear construction entrance. And then back to the base plan for the landscape architecture as far as the layout of the features and the open space. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask board members if they have any questions.
I've got just a few questions. That went by a little quick. Did I understand correctly that there will be no ground-floor bedrooms that will accommodate handicapped persons? They're all upstairs?
Right, the layout is all the bedrooms are upstairs, yes.
Understood. And when you said it will be all electric, you mean, there will be no fossil fuel provided in the sense that you won't even have propane fireplaces, correct?
There are no fireplaces on the buildings.
Got it. Okay. And the plantings will all be native? Taking that loosely to mean things that qualify as native under climate change that will eventually be native?
I can't speak to the climate change. I know there typically are native plantings that will be provided.
I was allowing, I was making it more broad because there are southern plants that will eventually be native but aren't quite yet, and I would count those as native. Okay, it's a lot of, oh, that was the other thing. Electric charging stations, will you pre-providing conduit as part of the development? I assume that you're not actually putting in electric charging stations at this time in order to keep your costs down. But if you put conduit in now as you're building, that's so much cheaper than laying conduit after the fact. So I wonder about that.
Think that each building is constructed new, comply with the building code requirements. So if you had a charging, actually, there's no garages, so.
Right, but you could lay out conduit just as far as the near edge of each parking area so that when somebody goes to put in outdoor-mounted electric charging stations later, the conduit would be right there.
I guess I defer to the board as far as what those requirements are.
And I will defer to Elizabeth about what we can or can't say about that.
Sorry, Sue, I didn't quite, I gotta turn up my volume, I quite didn't.
I was inquiring as to what we can specify or ask for in terms of laying conduit out to the edge of each parking area that's closest to a building or frankly, closest to anywhere where electrical wiring goes such that it would be easier to install electric charging stations at some later date, not as part of this project.
The board can have that conversation with the applicant and can make that a recommendation to the Board of Appeals.
Well, I personally think it would be an excellent idea to get the conduit in in terms of promoting sustainability and also for the tremendously efficiency-based benefit of having the conduit available already without going overboard by actually requesting electric charging stations to be installed. That's my personal opinion.
I think the point is that we should encourage electric charging stations in any new building that we're working on. And I just think we should throw it back at the developer and say, think about how you could accommodate our request for charging stations. That's all.
The board has made that a request on almost every
Right, exactly.
That has been before them in the past few years.
Like, you know, it's up to the applicant how we can adapt to that. Does that make sense, sir?
I would imagine similar to, you know, in a garage, you just have something out on a pedestal on the exterior building, closest to the near space.
Yeah, so give it some thought, if you would.
So maybe it's thought they'd be private for each respective dwelling unit, not a, not a public access type of thing or one community one.
Yeah.
It'd be in each building.
Let us know how you can accommodate our requests, that's all.
Certainly. Thanks so much.
Great. Thanks.
Mark, did you have any other questions?
No, sorry, Linda. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
The only, I, I have a question about why you have so many parking spaces. It seems to me that the requirement is one and a half spaces per unit, so that would be just eight altogether, and yet you're looking at quite a bit more. And do you think that might be? Why, why did you consider that necessary to have so many spaces?
Probably because I have five vehicles for myself right now in a three-bedroom home. It's just something where the kids are a certain age. The idea is to have families here for affordable housing. So and to keep one space available off of the main road. So that was kind of the intent, because Old Marlboro Road upwind, there's no parking on Old Marlboro Road. It's somewhat of a say, busy street, but it made sense, given the neighborhood. We, opportunities to park in front of the development are really there, so that's why I provoked trying to one additional.
Well, it is right on the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, which gives an unusually high level of access into the center of West Concord. And I wonder if it would be possible to instead of having a visitor's space essentially dedicated to each household to have a shared visitor parking space of some kind and have it be expected that it can be commonly used by residents in order to reduce not to provide a dedicated visitor's space essentially for each resident. It is a lot of impervious space, although, thank goodness, there are no garages.
Right, a garage you'd have, well, you could have a single car or a two-car with two spaces in front, so. It's, it's just based on their single-family homes, and it's trying to provide them with each of their own space. Allows them to have a place to, you know, ride their bike in front of the unit, too, in different aspects, too, so.
Sue, wouldn't having the three spaces possibly provide the provisions if we have to have handicap parking in any of these locations? Because you probably would lose one of those spots to put a handicap spot in, even though it's a private residence. They'd probably mark that way, right?
Well, the if it is a handicap, they'd just be parking in their own driveway. So it's true.
In addition, I wondered if can you tell us how many large trees are going to be removed during this process?
Everything outside this development has been saved by the division of the land, and then everything within this one acre will be removed.
And do you have a count at all?
No, we don't.
Okay. If there are no more questions from the board, are there any questions from the public? Seeing no hands, I guess I will ask for a motion so that we can continue this discussion. Oh, I'm sorry. I see Betsy has a hand up. Betsy Olson-Makowski, did you wish to ask a question?
Yes, Betsy Olson-Makowski, 1741 Wedgwood Common. Since it is adjacent to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, I wonder if you would consider maybe like a shared bike parking area or bike garage? I know that would be like another building, but I just think it would be really great to support the the bike infrastructure that's already there, I think. The residents would appreciate it. Anyway, just a thought I had. Thank you.
Nancy Kerr?
Hi, I would just like to echo the concern about all the parking spaces for cars because I think the whole point of this development was that it's near public transportation and near the bike trail, and that was why it was a no-brainer to put the houses here. And I think, you know, the same thing, the last agenda item talking about, whatever, whichever one it was, talking about, you know, the MBTA citing the housing near. I mean, that's the whole point of having them near this. So I think maybe we could cut down on some of the parking and the pavement. And the, the um, pavement, that's all, thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth?
Um, so. Something else to think about that I don't. Uh, think is shown on the plans and I'll apologize if I missed it, but. Um, there, because each of these units do not have any garages. Um, there's, there's no storage space, so where is? Um, and the floor plans are fairly minimal. So it may be something to look at as far as the number of parking spaces um, to the. Comment about bike storage, um, you know, there's, there's no shed, there's no, there's no outside storage for anything. Um, so, uh, that's just something that should probably be thought about a little bit more.
Good point.
Yes, now it's. Set up with a um. Management system that it will get uh, plowed and shoveled perhaps, but still homeowners may want to have their own. Snow shovel as well as a place to put their bicycle, um, uh. Their canoe, well, their canoe can sit outside, but a few things.
I, I guess we could allow a provision for them to. Install a shed if, if they wanted to. Uh, there's a full basement for storage, um. I'm indifferent on it, you know, it's, it could either be provided upfront or as a, as additional cost for affordable housing, or it could be. An allowance that they, they're, they have the right to put a shed on the property on their own exclusive use area.
The basements will be accessed via bulkhead?
Um, I typically.
I'm, I'm just wondering about the difficulty of storing a bicycle in the basement. Um, and how it goes up and down, it's not impossible to store it up via bulkhead, it's just inconvenient.
And I, I don't believe the plans that were submitted show basements. Um, show first and. Second floor plans.
Oh.
Uh, there, there is a full basement, so the. This first floor for building three shows the door here at the entry to go.
Whoops, we're not seeing that.
Oh, sorry, um. Just me, uh, so.
Well, that. Does change the calculus on storage.
There, there are, there are full basements. I'll have to check on the bulkheads. There are no bulkheads shown right now, but they can be added, uh, you are correct, um. I'm not sure what people are doing right now for bicycles when they have single family homes without garages, it's probably a shed. Um, or perhaps is. Something it's a bump out off of the building that we could build something in. Um, but we can look at those options and, and get back to you on that.
The, the floor plans and the elevations should be updated to show the basements and. And, yeah, they, they currently don't show like any bulkhead or. Anything like that.
Okay.
Um, and then Linda, my last question was, I don't, um. I don't remember seeing any, um. Information regarding li- uh, lighting.
Ah, yes.
I saw on the plan it said there would, or on, in the text, it said there will be no exterior lighting.
Right, which I, I found. Odd. In, in terms of. People just walking up to their. Front door at night.
Well, people have phones, don't they, with flashlights built in?
Well, they would, you'd have typical lighting in all the doors per the, you know, the front door.
Has to be.
Well, in that case, it should not, the plan should not say there is no exterior lighting.
Well, I think that was in relationship to be like, um, street lights.
Right.
We can respond to whether there's gonna be a lamppost each building or not. Uh, but there wasn't, there weren't any street lights as far as. Like you see on the street. Proposed for this.
No, I don't, I don't. Envision that you'd need full street lights.
Right.
Nor even necessarily a lamppost necessarily, but. We, we just want to know what your plan is.
Well, it's, it's. Thank you, it's nice to be talking about lampposts right now, um. That, that's a good thing if we're past everything else, but, uh, that's.
Well, not quite.
Well, not pass it all, but it's, so those are the options, whether to, would street lights be required, which we, we're not proposing. Possible lampposts at each, each driveway and then your standard, you know, lights along the exterior for building code.
Well, generally, the board requires cut sheets for proposed lighting for PRDs.
For the front and back door also.
Mm-hmm, and the lamp post, yeah.
Okay. We can, we can provide those.
And I'll just comment now that if the lighting um, cannot throw. No, obviously it will have to be dark skies compliant, but if it could not glare into anybody, any other properties windows. That would certainly be a plus. Or, or any other home on the property.
Certainly, we'll provide them for review.
Great, are there any additional questions from the board or from um? Participants in our meeting? If not, uh, then could I have a motion, uh, to continue? Andrew? Was your hand up?
Oh, sure, I'll make that motion to continue.
Andrew, you're um, muted.
Sorry, I'm just trying to find the actual document that says.
Oh, I'm sorry, I.
I have it in front of me, if you'd like me to make the motion.
I'll second it, cause that's.
Okay, in that case, I move. To continue the discussion on the application of the Concord Housing Development. Corporation for a special permanent site plan review under zoning bylaw sections ten, eleven point six and eleven point eight for a five unit planned residential development. At four oh six Old Marlborough Road, parcel number two seven three two. To January sixteenth, don't we need a time?
Yes. Twenty twenty four at seven ten?
You, you don't need a time because you're only making a recommendation?
Oh, really?
Yeah, okay. Okay. Correct, in that case to January sixteenth, twenty twenty four.
Twenty twenty four. Sorry. I recall the raw, Mark Giddings.
Wait, you need a second, Andrew didn't second it yet.
Andrew, I thought seconded it, all right, Mark Giddings.
Yes.
Abby Flanagan.
Aye.
Sue Felsham.
Aye.
Andrew Boardman.
Yes.
Rob Almeida.
Yes.
Linda Miller, aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Hope to see you, um, and have a good new year.
You too, thank you.
Um, on to administrative business, uh, now we have um, general public comment. Limited up to fifteen minutes with no more than three minutes allocated to any one speaker. Um, general public comment is limited to items that have not been on the agenda, so. Uh, would anyone wish to bring up another topic tonight? Not, then I thank you and I will be going on to the planning board twenty twenty four meeting discussion. So I think, um, have we? Approved the. Meeting schedule, did we do that last meeting?
Um, no, but I can bring it, I can bring it up.
Okay.
But I just realized, um, that. You had, you, Linda had sent me a chair's report last week.
Yes.
Yeah.
Did it not go out?
And it did not go out.
Fine, not a big deal. Um, just send it out after the fact, it just, it mostly was some um, interesting articles. And topics that I thought people might. Uh, find useful, but I, I don't think we need to. Uh, extend the meeting to discuss that.
Um, so what I can do though is I can bring up. Um. It looks a little, it, the schedule always looks overwhelming when it's. For the whole entire year, so I don't want people to be alarmed.
Okay.
So, uh, currently you have a, a. Definite meeting scheduled for next week, the nineteenth. Um, if. Um, January second, you had tentatively um, scheduled that. Just in case for warrant articles only, so, um. If you do finish everything next week. On Tuesday, you would not have the meeting on the nineteenth. Um, then it goes to um, the schedule of twice a month. Um. And so the whole schedule has been posted. Alternating between in person and virtual.
Can I just check, Elizabeth, this says that tonight's meeting is hybrid and next week's meeting is Zoom only, but.
So that's, that's not, um, so that one is off. Um, cause.
And what about next week, because if we were alternating, I was expecting next week to be, um. Hybrid, so I'm just checking.
Next week, um, should be hybrid.
Okay.
With these two are.
They got this switched, okay. And I.
Go ahead.
I think the other. Uh, thing that we wanted to talk about was the. Time of the meeting, I know that, um. For some people, evening meetings are challenging, but I don't know. Um, if. Day meetings are any easier, so I, but we haven't had that discussion. Do. Do we have any thoughts?
I work full time, I can't do days.
Yeah, I was, do I?
Same here.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's a quorum. Okay. Um. So we'll continue with seven o'clock, uh, no desire to push it earlier. Or later, seven o'clock is. Works for everyone. Okay. So, uh, now any uh, town planner or. Planning board, um. Updates, liaison reports. Reports from Elizabeth?
Uh, so I can, um, uh, tell the board that, um, the Board of Appeals had. Uh, continued public hearing for the Novo Riverside Commons Comprehensive Permit. Um, the last meeting, they focused on architecture and the sustainability elements. And following, as part of that conversation, the board uh, is going to have an, um. Architectural outside consultant peer review to assist them in evaluating, um, the. Massing and architecture of the buildings. Um, the project was continued out to, um, January eleventh. Um, it will also be a hybrid meeting in person at the Harvey Wheeler Community Center. Um, that is, a meeting will focus on. Um, the landscaping and lighting. Um. Traffic and um, changes to the civil plans based on comments from. Um, the outside consultants for uh, stormwater flood plain. Um, and just the site design. Um. That's kind of the biggest thing we're working on right now. That I have to update the board on.
And, um. So Elizabeth, in terms of the. Economic feasibility study, do we have enough now to? Engage the consultant and get them started or? Okay.
So I will, um, have to develop a, um, a contract and. Uh, go through finance to execute the contract and, um, that will probably take, um. Given the holidays, probably two weeks. To have that go through the process.
Okay, great. Okay. Okay, anything further? If not, um, then we can adjourn the meeting and, um. Thank you all, see you, um, in a couple of weeks.
Nope, see you next week.
Next week.
Week, next week. Uh, in person. Right? Okay, good night.
Good night.